Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, I welcome you to the 2021 Madison Board of Education Candidates Forum. My name is Carol Reimers. I am a board member on the League of Women Voters of the East Shore. I'm a Killingworth resident, and I will be the moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters is a national, state, and local, nonpartisan political organization that welcomes all to join us. We are pleased to sponsor debates like this one because we believe in empowering voters and defending democracy. The candidates for the Madison Board of Education are Mary Ann Connolly, Republican; Jennifer Gordon, Republican; Maureen Lewis, Democrat; Christine Mazzano, Republican; Stephen Penn, Democrat; and Emily Rosenthal, Democrat. Each candidate will have one minute opening statement to share with us their qualifications. This will be followed by a question and answer period. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions. Then each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement. The candidates will speak in alphabetical order, and we will rotate during the questions. Now let's begin with our opening statements. And Ms. Connolly, you are the first one.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Connolly. I'm running for the Board of Education in Madison. I am a retired registered nurse. I worked for 50 years, mostly in pediatrics, almost all of it. The last eight years of my, before I retired, I was a school nurse at Guilford High School. I also worked upstate New York as a Guilford, as a school nurse. I've been married to my amazing husband for 50 years. We have five children and 10 grandchildren. I am interested in being on the Board of Education because I've always been interested in children. They are my number-one concern.
Ms. Gordon?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gordon. My husband, son, and I moved to Madison from the Baltimore metro area of Maryland in May of 2017, and our son is currently a second grader at Ryerson. And his education was a huge factor for why we chose to settle in Madison. I'm seeking office because I believe it is our duty to provide a well-rounded, quality education to our children. Madison has historically been known for its strong schools, and with having a young son in the system, I wanted to contribute to those efforts in the most meaningful way I could. My past experiences working as a certified athletic trainer in the high school setting and as manager of my hospital's outreach athletic training program impressed upon me the importance of building trust within the school community. It also provided me the experience of working with a diverse set of community stakeholders and understanding their unique needs. To be successful, a BOE member can facilitate that trust.
Ms. Lewis, next.
Hello, I'm Maureen Lewis, and I'm a candidate for the Madison Board of Education. I would like to open by thanking the League of Women Voters for once again bringing our candidates together to share our thoughts for serving our Madison community. I have served as a PTO president at three of our schools and currently serve as the chair of the parent representative council, where I lead conversations between PTO executive leaders and the superintendent. I have learned a tremendous amount about our schools by working in my volunteer roles with administrators in all of our schools, as well as the current and the past three superintendents. I've also worked closely with educators, staff, and hundreds of parents and students, and I know our buildings as well as their strengths and weaknesses. I'm excited for the opportunity to discuss policy, policy issues our schools face, and to share how my 19 years of hands-on experience in our schools and my years as a business professional would be an asset to the Board of Education.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? I was having trouble.
That would be better. If a little louder would be better.
Better?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'm honored to be here with you this evening. While I'm relatively new to the town of Madison, it hasn't taken me long to realize that the town of Madison is truly where I feel at home. I bring with me a diverse array of experience, serving as a financial professional and a Board of Education member in a nearby community for the past eight years. These experiences have provided me with firsthand understanding of the challenges and rewarding and creating programs and policies that have resulted in improving social, emotional, and academic outcomes for students, staff, and the community. My desire to become a part of the Madison Board of Education is so that I can utilize my professional and educational experiences in a way that can benefit students, parents, and the community at large. I welcome the opportunity to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
Hello, folks. I'm Steve Penn, and I've lived in Madison for 29 years with my wife, and my children have gone through Madison Public Schools. I've served children and families my entire adult life. I've been a special educator, a principal, a school designer, a coach of Odyssey of the Mind at Brown, a director of career and tech ed, and currently I'm an executive coach to districts all across the state. Madison's vision statement is every child, every day, leading the way. And I've spent my career designing and leading classrooms in schools to reach every student, and I know we can do that in Madison. I'm running for the Board of Ed because I believe that what I've learned about what makes for high-performing schools has value to my community. I have a great love of young people and believe that school's purpose is to help every child discover their potential and find their unique place in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Emily Rosenthal, and I'm honored to be running for reelection to the Madison Board of Education. We've accomplished a great deal these last few years, but we have much work ahead of us. I am ready and I'm eager to continue this important work, in particular renewing our school facilities and supporting the social, emotional, and educational needs of our students. Since 2012, my family has called Madison home. I have a seventh grader at Paulson, and my daughter is in third at Ryerson. The quality of our schools and the education our kids get is profoundly important to me as a parent, a community member, and a taxpayer. When I first decided to run for the Board of Ed over four years ago, I was particularly moved by the district's vision of learning as joyful. Finally, I bring a unique and important perspective to the Board as a social worker and a public health professional. I look forward to our conversation this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Now we'll go into the question and answer section. And the first question. What are your main priorities for improving Madison's educational program? Ms. Connolly, you get to start.
Well, my main priorities, of course, are what's right and safe for our children. To improve, I believe we need to move forward in the direction that we're going right now, but we need to maybe become more involved in what is going on in the children's lives. And that means including the parents and the teachers and the children in discussions and being a part of it all together.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gordon?
I completely agree with a point that Mary Ann made, that it's absolutely vital for us to have parent involvement in all aspects of our child and our children's education. That's what's going to create the biggest amount of buy-in into all of the programs that we put forth. I also believe that we need to make sure that we're creating safe and healthy environments for our students and their learning environment, and I think that things such as the building project will help to move that forward when we have clean air for the students to be breathing in, adequate lighting, technology that's going to be current for the learning models that we have present today, and just addressing the needs of each child, recognizing where they need support and giving supports to those that also need to be pushed a little bit beyond what is considered traditional.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Hello. I again agree that there's parental involvement is critical, and that's one of the reasons that I've decided to run for the Board of Education, because I've been in the schools and dealing with parents for 19 years and can bring the parent perspective. So I think that's a great point to make. Huge priorities for me, the number one would be moving forward with the school referendum project. We do need modern buildings, and I would also, another priority is the COVID recovery for our students to make sure that they're fully caught up socially, emotionally, and academically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Mazzano?
Yes. I will echo everyone's word thus far. I do believe that parent involvement is critical in the learning of any child. I believe that transparency is key as well, allowing parents into boardrooms, allowing us to fully understand their point of view, to ensure that safety is a priority for all, not just for students, but for administrators as well. But what I also believe is that it's a taxpayer's responsibility and right to know what's happening within their tax dollars and their schools. So with regards to the referendum, we need to be transparent with that, and we need to answer questions and be fully open to their suggestions as well.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
Yes. I think the priorities in the short term are taking care of the young people and the staff that I think have been severely impacted by COVID within the school. Beyond that, I would look a little further into the future. You know, our schools have to adjust and change to prepare our young people for a very changed world that they are going to be going out to. And that means really looking at our practices and embracing our mission and vision about every single student, every day. There are school models that can do that, and it's, from my perspective, the area that we can give the most attention to. So when they graduate, we know that they're prepared for this very changed world that they're going out into.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you. I think one of my main priorities for improving Madison's educational program looking ahead is doing everything we can as a board to support the quality of the education that our kids get in their classrooms, the professional development that we provide to our educators. A big part of the Board of Education is supporting and working with the superintendent, monitoring the performance of the superintendent as well as outcomes across the district. I will, of course, be advocating strongly for our comprehensive school renewal plan. It's time that we take our facilities up to 21st century learning. And then connecting with the community, we provide opportunities for the public to participate in board meetings, to attend. We have public forums coming up around our school facilities renewal and focusing on strong, responsible, and supportive budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. What is the best way for students to develop healthy attitudes toward diversity? Ms. Gordon, you're first on this question.
Well, I think that one of the best things that we can do to develop healthy perspectives on diversity is through a quality, well-rounded education that presents, you know, the good and the bad of our history. I think we want to try and do that as best we can without instilling any bias into our students. I think that we don't want to lead them in one direction or another. We want to allow for discussion and, I dare say, debate in our classrooms. We want to develop our students into researchers, into critical and independent thinkers, first and foremost, and just by providing a variety of age-appropriate texts into our curriculum, I think will help to foster the idea of diversity.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
My apologies, I didn't unmute. I think it's essential to teach our students to lead with kindness and respect for others and to be inclusive, and for all children to feel safe and respected in our schools. It's also important to prepare them for the real world by having age and developmentally appropriate conversations about inclusion and diversity, and sometimes hard conversations about racism and prejudice that exist in the world today.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano?
There you go. I think to answer this question, I think we all realize that each child is different, regardless of their race, regardless of their religion. Every child is different. Every child requires different learning skills, different ways of learning. But it's important to recognize that, and it's important to provide an atmosphere that's not only healthy, but that is receptive to those needs. So it is, it is by far a topic and a hot topic, if you will, but my view on and my opinion is that everyone's created equal, irregardless of their backgrounds or their history. So it is important to provide, that this Board of Education provides safe and nurturing curriculum for them to thrive and to be comfortable, because that's the most important thing.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
The whole subject of diversity goes beyond just the issue of race. Diversity has many manifestations in the school. And, you know, for me, when students in a school see that people, their colleagues and their friends, have equal access to all of the programs and opportunities that exist in the school, they learn from that. When they see that everyone who comes to school comes to a culture where they have a sense of belonging and value, they learn from that. I think deliberately, we have to provide our young people with experiences so they get exposure to different subgroups, because our graduates say they leave our schools not feeling prepared for that.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you. I think it's a really important question. I'm glad you asked it. Our district theory of action states that we will implement a developmentally responsive and standard-based curriculum that's relevant to our students' world. And central to our school's mission is the commitment to prepare all of our learners to make a unique contribution as citizens of a diverse and global community. So that includes addressing and reflecting on such important issues as differences among peers, inequities, human rights and human dignity, racism and discrimination, empathy, civil discourse, and tolerance. And I think this work is done thoughtfully and age-appropriately within our meaningful and relevant curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Connolly?
I agree with every, everything that everyone has said so far. I totally do. But I think that we must remember that kindness and respect is also taught in the homes. And so we hope that our children come to school with those values. Once they get into school, I believe that it just should be reinforced by the education system. And again, kindness and respect, does not matter what the differences are, it does not matter what color, what race, what anything that you are, whether you wear glasses or you wear braces, people need to be respectful, and it needs to be carried on from the home into the schools. As far as teaching goes, I think it's just a matter of reinforcement.
Thank you. Next question. What more can our schools do to ensure their students will be well-prepared for the future? Ms. Lewis, you start this question.
I think our schools, our current Board of Education and the committee that put together the profile of a graduate has done a phenomenal job, and that's where we're teaching our students all along. We should be following that to get Daniel Hand students ready to create, for creative thinking, for global thinking, for communications and collaboration, for critical thinking, self-direction. These are all things that they are focusing on in the profile of a graduate, and I think that's phenomenal, and I think our Board of Education has done a great job with it.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano?
Thank you. I think that we live in an ever-changing world. I think we've seen it through COVID last year. I think things are constantly evolving and constantly changing. So it is imperative that for any Board of Ed, most especially the Madison Board of Ed, stay on top of the state-of-the-art learning, the ensuring that our students are receiving education, but in all areas, mental health and in with social media, and ensuring that we are, we are covering all of our bases so that when our children actually graduate and go off to the world, which is difficult, that they're prepared. So it's imperative that we, as a Board of Ed, continue to remain vigilant.
Mr. Penn?
What the, what the future calls for is that our students can apply what it is that they learn. And it's not just about what you know, it's about what you can do with what you know. This is a central point for me as I look at our school renewal plan, because the new facilities will offer opportunities to be able to set up classrooms and labs where young people can apply and be entrepreneurs in utilizing their knowledge and work in teams to be able to do that kind of problem-solving. It's addressed in the profile of a graduate and embraced by the district. The Board's job is to see it through.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you. I'm thinking about how we can ensure that our students are well-prepared for the future. I think about some of the presentations that students have given to the Board of Education over the past couple of years, in particular an independent study project in the high school, where we were able to hear from students where they had an in-depth experience with a topic that they chose that was guided by their passion. And to be able to see these students so internally motivated and passionate about the work that they were doing when they were given the time and the resources and the support to do that, I think about that's how we're helping to build our students for the future, giving them those real-life experiences, having a curriculum that is continually revised and updated to meet the needs of the future, different job opportunities, different career paths for all of our learners, and that is part of that continual review of the curriculum as well as adjusting the professional development and the support that we give our educators.
Thank you. Ms. Connolly? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Connolly, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. One of the things that I think that will help ensure the future of our, and what we can do to improve, is that we have to remember the students who are not necessarily the students who are going on to college. We have to remember that there are other paths for these children, and I think that we need to look into that and see what we can do to make it more available for them within our schools. I believe vocational training is very important, and I think that I could see that we could use a little bit more of that within our district.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon?
Hi. I think the continual curriculum evaluation that our district does is imperative to the continued success of our students as they move on into either the workforce setting, vocational training, or into higher education. And also just for us to keep abreast of the current models that people are working under. Everybody used to be in an office before. Now so many people are working from Zoom, which means that the team environment that they were working in together in an office setting is now in a remote setting. So adjusting our teaching models to stay current with what our students will be experiencing as they move into adulthood, I think that's going to definitely set them up for success as they move forward.
Thank you. Our next question. Do you support the proposed school building plan and holding a public referendum for it? And Ms. Mazzano, you're first. Oh, sorry, Ms. Mazzano. We can't hear you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. I absolutely support the school building plan. I think that a lot of our schools in Madison, from what I've read, are quite old, and, and we need to update with state-of-the-art facilities. I did sit in on a Board of Education meeting with regards to the presentation for the finance of that. And while it was beyond interesting, it's expensive, and it is costly, and it's costly to taxpayers. So it's imperative that we be transparent with them and realize what the cost is, the projected cost, but also, we also need to realize what the projected savings or realized savings is for the school system. So I am in support of it fully, but I do think that there are some questions out there that still need to be tweaked and more defined.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
I'm enthusiastically in support of the school renewal plan for a number of reasons. One, buildings are old, they're inefficient, they're breaking down, and they're costly. New buildings provide us with a number of things that are timely and necessary. One, air exchange and new systems that keep the building cool in the warm weather and safe, it's essential. Increased security, that is a cost that absolutely would have to happen with any school. But more important to me is the new kinds of learning spaces that can support the kind of education that our teachers and our school administrators are designing and that our kids deserve and keep Madison at the front of top school systems in this state.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you. Yes, I absolutely do support the proposed school building plan and holding a referendum for it in February. Our theory of action states that we provide modern learning spaces, technology, and school facilities that support our district vision, and this plan will help us move in that right direction. In 2019, the Board adopted our Madison Schools Renewal Plan to address these aging facilities, and that was developed in response to our 10-year, $100 million capital maintenance plan, a plan that would simply maintain our current buildings without any significant improvements. So we had the So we had the tri-board working group met a lot over many weeks, reviewed over 50 options. And the plan that they brought to us and that was approved by the board and going to a referendum in February is comprehensive and will provide 21st century learning environments along with improved air quality and enhanced security. It also will reduce the size of our footprint for the district from seven buildings to four. I believe the plan is thoughtful and necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Well, I am certainly in favor of anything that will be cost-effective and bring safety to our faculty and our children. Being that I am not on the board yet, I only know what the public knows about the referendum and how that will move forward. I believe that, again, safety is the most important thing. And I know that these buildings are old and do need a lot of repair. So if I'm elected, I will certainly look into that and see, you know, what's the best for our town and certainly our children.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon?
So much of what Emily had mentioned is exactly what was on my docket to speak about. I've been following along with this process since 2019 when my son was a preschooler. And I definitely support bringing this to referendum. I'm definitely supportive of the new buildings. In addition to what so many others have already said, when we invest in our facilities, it also is going to attract and retain the top-quality teachers that we have in the district, just like so many of us would expect in our professional atmospheres to have good-quality facilities and the tools we need to do our jobs effectively and at high level. That's also what we need to provide to our teachers and our students. Of course, we want to be mindful about the total ticket price. We want to make sure we're investigating all of the bid processes and procurement of, you know, durable goods and those that can be... Sorry.
Ms. Lewis, now.
Hello. I also very enthusiastically support the school renewal project. I have been hearing about it and following it for the past 10 years that it's been in the development. And I think it's a very, very long overdue project. I think the plan that is put forward is extremely comprehensive and extremely thoughtful. And I thank everybody, the tri-board that has worked on that. It is about time that our facilities matched our education. We've maintained excellence in our schools, but we don't have the facilities that match them. And it is going to give us the learning environments the students need. It's less expensive, actually, than to continue to repair and patch these schools up as we've been doing. Oh, my time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next question. How can the Board of Education improve communications with the public? Mr. Penn, you're first.
This is a great question, and I appreciate it. You know, as I've walked around the community and knocked on doors and talked to folks, what's become clear to me is that people don't fully understand the relationship between them and board members. And part of the work of the board is to get that word out to folks that we're just your neighbors, we're representatives of your thoughts and your ideas. So that when they're passionate about things and they say the board ought to do something, I say, there are meetings that happen every month. Come to the meeting, speak to what is your passion and was important, and join that partnership between you and your members of the board to make this process work.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you. One of the main priorities of the Board of Education is to represent the interests of the entire district. And so a big part of that is listening to the voices of the community, parents and students and taxpayers. And while it has been a little trickier over the past year and a half to hear from the public, we actually saw greater attendance at our Zoom meetings than we had in person. And so I think it's important to find different ways to connect with the community and make our meetings accessible for folks. People do come and they do speak. The public comment of our meetings is important. We also have student representatives as part of our Board of Education. And it's always a highlight of the meetings to hear their perspective on what's happening in the schools. We will be holding forums looking ahead for the facilities renewal plan. And also in the last few years, we did create a new committee of the Board of Education focused on communications, recognizing the important role that that plays.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Well, I totally agree with that. I think that I'm glad to hear that they have student representation because that's a big thing for me and that really, that's awesome. And I think that we just need to listen to parents. As a pediatric nurse, I know that that is such a key issue. And we really, I mean, really listen and answer their questions and let them be involved. And I think too, if the board gets along and we all work well together, I think that we can get our word out. And if we get our word out, I believe that people will come and listen.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon?
I think that, you know, just utilizing all of the resources that we have available to us, it's key to getting the word out to our community members. People are busy, there's a lot going on. And the access to these Zoom meetings has been, I think, such a huge benefit. And I've really been an advocate for the meetings to continue on with some sort of hybrid fashion all across the continuum of town government because it gives people so much more access in their very busy lives. I'm also very happy to see that suggestions that Maureen and myself made last year on the PRC pertaining the school referendum have been put into action with Board of Ed members and administrators, Dr. Cook going on a roadshow and making sure they get the information out to as many people as they can to create as much understanding as they can so that people really know what it is they're voting for.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, now.
I think to some points already made, attending Board of Education meetings is a wonderful way to be involved. And they are available on Channel 19 on YouTube and now also on Zoom calls. I think that it's been great that our Board of Education members have given out their emails so that we can email them with questions. I know I have done that over the years. And I also think being out in the community, as many of the current Board of Education members do, and I would love to do if I'm lucky enough to be elected, is to attend school events, to go to the events at the elementary schools and all of the schools and meet the parents that way and in person. And then the other thing I think is critical is to ask for feedback. What can we deliver to the parents? How can we better communicate? And to reach out and ask what more we can be doing.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano?
Yes, thank you. This is a great question. And it's one that I hold deep in my heart and my passion for being a Board of Ed member. It is imperative that we, as Board of Ed members, connect with the public. I agree with Emily. I agree with all of you. I love the fact that there are student representatives on a Board of Ed. I love to hear about their thoughts. I love to hear about where they're going to college. It is vital for citizens, parents, staff, students, incoming residents that are thinking about coming to Madison know that their voice is being heard, that the Board of Education wants to know what they think. And we are listening and we are engaged in helping and making things the best they can be for everyone.
Thank you. How can the mental health needs of teachers and students be better served, especially as they relate to the ongoing pandemic? Ms. Rosenthal, you're first.
Thank you. As a social worker and as a parent of two young children, this is a very important question. I think it's a very important question that we should always be thinking about, the mental health of our staff, our teachers, our students, and in particular at this time. We have been able to use some of the COVID relief funding to enhance the support that we provide in the schools through additional interventionists, through social work resources. I'm also really proud of a program that we implemented at the middle school that had been in the high school before called Effective School Solutions, which provides intensive support for students who may have school avoidance or anxiety and allows students to stay in the district and get the support they need while continuing their education in their community. There's a lot of resources that we have in place and we're always looking to see what more we can do this year and looking ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes, I believe that that is a big issue in our schools. And I know, having worked in the high schools and junior high, how important it is for students to have somewhere to go. And I know that every resource, every person in that school should be a person who is a resource. But certainly the social worker and I must say, the school nurses and resource officers, anyone, I think maybe some more training for the adult people that are involved with the students on an everyday basis might help that. I'm also very concerned about the drug problems, and I know that they are everywhere. And I think that that has something to do with the psych problems and certainly the COVID. But I would hope that we would improve our facility with more resources when it comes to mental health.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon?
I think what we're doing, especially starting in the younger grades with teaching mindfulness, it has been very helpful for our young learners. And also, it's my understanding with the extra COVID funds, we've been able to make sure that there are enough counselors and psychologists available at each of our schools. Something that I think would also be helpful would be more pertinent to our staff and our administrators. Something that's been done at Yale New Haven Hospital is to provide kind of one-on-one coaching slash counseling sessions for their healthcare workers. And that could be a one-time instance, or it can be a continuation on for people to be able to speak about the issues that are affecting them and help them to stay in a healthy mindset as they're in their work environment. And if that's something that we could potentially look to incorporate here, I think that would be a big benefit for our staff and administration as well.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano? No, I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis.
Well, I think this is a very important issue, and I'm glad we're talking about it and hope we continue to talk about it even after the COVID recovery. But I was very happy to see that funds were allocated for additional social services from the grant money that we received. And that's needed in all of the schools. And I think to Jen's point, the mindfulness that they've brought into many of the schools over the years even has been wonderful, and I'd love to see more of that. For example, in the high school during exam week, they bring in puppies. And that just really brings a whole new energy to the school. And little things like that that aren't expensive made a huge difference. So I think the more creative we can get, the better, and the more services we can get. And to keep evaluating and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and our staff.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano?
Thank you. This is a very big question, and I'm glad that we're touching on this. I think it's a subject that is a sensitive one. But I also feel that it's a subject that is so important. With the past couple of years, not just with COVID, but with social media and peer pressure and just kids just being, you know, kids and growing up in this day and age, it's difficult. It's all difficult. And I think what's important is recognizing the signs, recognizing the symptoms, and engaging with parents, engaging with staff, engaging with students, and trying to get them to open up and trying to get parents to recognize that there could possibly be a problem and we're here to fix it. So I am a true advocate of that.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
I travel all around the state, and I will tell you, this is an issue in every school across the state at this point in time. Now, for the adults, I think the first part is acknowledging and recognizing that this is part of our work that we do in schools. It's not just academic instruction. Classrooms are amazingly isolated. And I'm happy to say, Madison, they've been working for some time and trying to reduce that. But it means recognizing that our staff and our adults need support. As for kids, it's about building a culture and a mindset within the schools that says it is our business to have a safety net for kids, to be watching for all the time how they're doing, to follow up, to question, and then to have lines of communication so that it goes beyond to be certain that kids get the assistance they need from things like the Madison Youth and Family Services and the helpers that exist in the school.
Okay, this will be our last question before closing statements. How important is it for students to learn at least one foreign language and for how long? Ms. Conley, you start, please.
Well, I think it's very important to teach a language or for a student to have a language. I can't say, I would think that the amount of time that a student wants to keep learning that is probably up to the student and the curriculum that they're involved in. I believe because of the world being so large and so close together now, that it's important to have that.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon?
We live in such a global world and global economy that it really is imperative for our students to learn a second language. I think the younger that we can start that, the better off that they progress through their learning of a second language. It also sets the stage for learning more than one language beyond. I think offering a singular second language in the lower grades and multiple second language options in high school, I think that is a really great model. And I think that's something that we should continue forward with because as our students, as we talked about, are progressing into their professional settings, this is oftentimes a desirable trait for an employer. And the better we can provide those, access to those curriculum, the better off they will be as they move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
I think foreign language is phenomenal. And to Jen's point, the earlier they learn it, the better because it's a whole lot of fun when they're really young and they start learning. My children loved foreign language in the high schools here and continued on longer than they were required to. And they've learned a tremendous amount and they're using it today. So I think it's extremely important.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzano?
Yes, thank you. I think I will echo Jen's sentiments that it is a global world and it is global learning. And a second language is almost necessary. It's almost imperative these days to have. I think the earlier we start, the better we are and the better that these children will be. I also believe that it should be offered, again, like I said, in earlier years, but multiple in high school. This helps in college as well. And not that everyone should go to college, but if you're headed in that direction, they look for that. That is a big key that they look for. And I am a full supporter of offering multiple languages on the curriculum. I think it's imperative.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
It's a 21st century essential competency. It's a 21st century essential competency. You know, in the past, students took languages so that they could get into a good college. And I would say, well, see, I've had three years or four years. You know, this is at the heart of one of the things I believe passionately. It's about competency. It's not about the number of years or how many times you've sat there. You know, it's what you can do with what you've learned. And language is a particular area where this is true. You know, stay with it until you have functionality and competency to be able to use it, at least fundamentally, as you communicate around the world.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you. I agree. I think it is important for kids to learn foreign language. In particular, I love myself the early exposure. My kids have both been learning Spanish in Madison Public Schools since kindergarten. And last spring, when my second grader was learning from home with me, I got a refresher on my Spanish too. And I was able to see the fun and engaging and age-appropriate way that they were learning. And it's about language. It's about a global society. But it's also about teaching our kids to be comfortable in other cultures, in other settings, to have different ways of communicating. Even if they don't speak Spanish perfectly, they have enough to make friends in different settings and learning about the world around us because that ultimately is our goal, is to have our students be able to go out and be citizens, positive citizens in a global society. So I think language is an important part of that, but there's a lot more to it as well.
Thank you very much. So now we are at the portion of closing statements. Each of the candidates will have one minute to share their closing statement with us. And Ms. Conley, you will go first.
Well, if I'm elected to the Board of Education in Madison, I promise to listen to the parents, students, and teachers' concerns. I will use this position to help our young children, people stay safe and healthy in an environment that threatens them at every turn. I will address the drug and mental health issues affecting our youth and I will do everything in my power to represent the people who have voted for me with the number one priority being our children.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon?
Our town has a monumental project at its doorstep. As we prepare to bring our school project to referendum, we must have thorough education and clear communication on the project scope for our community. In my current role as a PTO president and parent representative council member, I have been strongly advocating for this. I believe that process transparency and advocacy for smart spending are necessary in order to secure the critical resources that our students and teachers need if we are to position them for best success. We must continue to strive for a high level of educational excellence. COVID certainly created some challenges and in some cases minor setbacks, but we have an amazing group of educators and they've shown tremendous commitment to our students. It should be our duty to assist their efforts.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were finished. I apologize.
Sorry. Just one more thing if it's okay. It should be our duty to assist their efforts in developing supports and curriculum that best serve our learners. We must also focus on the long-term planning of our facilities in order to maintain our existing buildings and the investments that are so large for our town. If elected, I will always strive to provide open dialogue with the community. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you to everyone who made this conversation possible tonight. To the voters of Madison, I hope you see that I have the skills, the drive, and the passion to help our students succeed despite the many challenges that have come their way over the past several years. I promise to advocate for our Madison students every step of the way and to make policy decisions with a focus on all the dimensions of student success. For nearly two decades, I have supported our Madison Public Schools in any way that I could. And I truly feel that my experience has qualified me and led me to a seat on the Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Misano?
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up this evening. It was extremely informative, very professional, and it was a joy to sit with my fellow candidates tonight. And I wish you all the best of luck. If elected, I am committed to be devoted to the Madison Board of Education, to listen and to advocate for parents, for students, for taxpayers. The main priority that I feel that I will bring to this Board of Ed is transparency and listening to what the needs are and ensuring that the child and the student's best interests are heard and are brought forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
This is an important election that occurs in an important time in our community and in our nation. The world has changed tremendously as a result of technology, the global economy, climate change, and of course, the pandemic. It's a time of great advancement and opportunity, but also great challenge. There are fewer jobs and they require greater skill. What that means for our children is that the careers and futures they will graduate to require additional knowledge, skills, and mindsets for them to be successful. This is a time for a school board that has its eye on that future and recognizes those challenges. It's not a time for our schools are good enough and stay the course. I entered this race because I saw Madison's Vision and Action Plan, a community that gets it and is focused on the future and developing the potential of every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you. These last four years on the board have reaffirmed my belief in our schools and my utmost respect for our educators. The work that they have done for our kids over the past year and a half has been nothing short of heroic. In my time on the board, I also have enjoyed broad experience that has prepared me well for the next four years if reelected. I currently chair the Facilities Committee and I sit on the Executive and Policy Committees. I understand and I appreciate the role of a Board of Education. Our power lies in our process as a group of nine and we play an important role of oversight with the superintendent, the budget, and the policies. I am committed to work alongside my fellow board members and our school administrators, listening to the voices of students and parents with a singular focus on student success, support, outcomes, and learning. As part of our district's profile of a graduate, we seek to educate and empower all of our students to think critically and creatively. I will advocate for and support this exceptional mission every day. Thank you for this opportunity.
Well, we give our thanks to the candidates for participating in a lively and informative forum. And we are grateful for the BCTV for recording this forum. This recording will be available on the Legal Women Voters of the East Shore YouTube channel and on MadisonTV.org. Your local government impacts your life every single day. It will be your turn as the voter to let your voice be heard. Be sure to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, when the polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Don't miss this opportunity to participate in your government. Thank you.